On the record?
All right. Call to order, the City of Lincoln City City Council meeting for August 22, 2011. Roll call, please.
Mayor Dick Anderson?
Here.
Gordon Eggleton?
He's here.
Gary Ellingson?
Here.
Chester Narikas?
Here.
Roger Sprague?
Here.
Henry Quandt?
Here.
Stand for pledge of allegiance. Welcome, everybody, this evening. And this would be the time on the agenda for citizen comments. Comments from citizens present on agenda and non-agenda items. The purpose of comments from citizens is to allow citizens to present information or raise an issue regarding items not on the agenda or regarding agenda items that do not include a public hearing. A time limit of five minutes per citizen shall apply. I've asked the city recorder to utilize the light system so that the speaker will be informed as to their remaining time and so that we can have consistency. As a general rule, this is not a time for an exchange of questions. However, at the conclusion of the agenda item, a counselor can discuss or raise questions regarding something presented by a citizen. And we have Kate Dashell stepping in this evening for the city recorder. Thanks for joining us, Kate. We have, make sure, Mr. Bowman, we'll get you down on another item. Line 12 is a public hearing. And must be Greg? Greg Speer?
Yep.
Looks like you're the only one without an agenda topic. Come on up.
Good afternoon, or good evening, whatever it may be. Greg Speer, 6548 Southwest Fleet. Just here again before the council, just reminding everyone that the Lincoln City Vacation Home Association is still here and very interested in working with you guys. So if there's things going on in meetings regarding this topic, we'd like to help out. We're also doing a lot of research and fact finding, so we're finding some very interesting facts that we'd like to, at some point, share. And so we'll be bringing those to you hopefully in the next month or so. One of the things that has become interesting to me to note in some of the articles that have happened over the last week or two, both in The Guardian, I think, a couple papers up and down the coast, regarding the coast, is this notion that somehow me as a vacation rental owner is fully responsible for the behavior of my tenants. And I think that particular standpoint needs to be looked at more closely. And in that, I think it's important that we set rules as vacation homeowner, homeowners, invite people over, and that they, those rules are set in a certain way upfront as a contract. And then there's, I think, unique ways of enforcing that. And so we need to, I think, have that conversation. But even more, thinking outside the box, maybe we need to be better at, as a community, inviting people that we would rather have stay with us. So, for example, if there's some group of Japanese men that stay at house and spend a little bit too much time as a larger group than they were originally intended to and had too much of a good time late into the evening, you probably want to somehow enforce that by, you know, saying, okay, X number of dollars per person over. If you only were supposed to have eight and you had 20 people there, well, then you get a fine of $2,000 or whatever for the people there, not necessarily the homeowner. The homeowner probably didn't even know about it. So I'm just saying, there's, I think there's a lot of things that we, as a, as a group, are, can bring to the table if that's an opportunity. Okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Oxenholt, you have, there's public hearing unless you have, you know, if you want to hear one of these public hearing topics? The, well, if it's a public hearing item, is that the question? Then you're not of record. If you, you are certainly entitled to speak then. Okay?
I think that means that they have to ignore what you say, then, I believe.
That's right. I have to tell them to discount what you say because it's a land use public hearing? Oh, well, it, it, it...
Maybe not.
We can't prevent you from speaking, however, if it's a land use public hearing, which these are, then we need to get the comments on the record during those hearings. You're welcome to submit written testimony into the record.
You must have an engagement later this evening, I am assuming.
Again, you, you can speak, and when the time comes for the hearing, I'll specifically ask council to disregard your comments. I'm sorry, we're not...
Yeah.
You're not, you're not on...
Sit, sit down to the...
...in record.
But go ahead and ask your question to the, if we could. What's the question, John? You were...
The main thing I want to comment on actually isn't being read for ordinance anyhow.
It is not one of these public hearing items?
It is a public hearing, but it's not up for the ordinance portion.
It's not up for the what?
For the, it's not being read as...
Adoption.
It's just a public hearing on it this evening.
Yeah.
And those are the comments we...
I have a non-agenda item anyway, so maybe I'll start with that.
Well, we're, we're looking forward to your comments, so that we're not trying to stop you from saying anything. I just want to make sure we can consider it.
Right.
And what we're hearing is, unless it's there, at that time, we're not able to. Correct?
Can I still say it?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Because they're not big points, anyway, so...
Name and address.
John Oxenholt, 2002 Northwest 36, Lincoln City. Apologize for maybe getting out of turn, but I do have a dinner. One non-agenda item I just wanted to briefly comment on, it's not something that we're doing in cooperation with any of the vacation rentals, and I know there's no vacation rentals on the agenda. It's also not something we're doing with LCBHA, but as an experiment, I had a couple staff members brainstorm on some of sort of the issues that come up, and parking's one of them. And on an experimental basis, our company is experimenting with actually giving permits, parking permits. And so we just sort of want to see whether that's a good idea or a bad idea. And if it's a good idea, we'll share that with some of our colleagues, and maybe they want to adopt, you know, the same templates that we use. But I guess the main point is that, you know, we are trying to be proactive in, you know, addressing some of the relevant issues and problems that are out there. As far as the ordinances that are up for review, I just wanted to compliment the city on being proactive. I don't actually own any oceanfront property that would fall under the flood zone, but I do, I can see that that could become an issue in the future. And so I think it's a good idea to address the potential unintended consequence of the recent height limitations. And my only comment would be, whether it's on or off the record, that maybe that four-foot limitation that the planning commission put in there, maybe, maybe that shouldn't be there, maybe it should, or maybe it should be five feet or six feet. And then with regard to the commercial design standards, just sort of a general comment, I think the intent of having good design, I'm very supportive of that. Again, just looking at potential unintended consequences, if there was a scenario where somebody couldn't meet the new setback requirements or the setback requirements due to topography or something like that on a commercial property, it would just be nice if there is, you know, some sort of exception, which may already be in there. I haven't given it an exhaustive review. And also, the more that we can make it easier to build buildings in this town and start new businesses and sort of streamline the processes, I'm also in favor of that. And maybe it's difficult to improve design and, and make it easier to build, but to the extent that we can do both, I'm, would be very supportive of that. That's it.
Great.
Kate didn't get a chance to buzz me.
Thank you for coming. Any other citizens that didn't have the opportunity to sign up that would like to speak, now would be the time? Please come forward.
My name is March Hurl. I live at 5245 Northeast 50th Street in Nyatso. What I'd like to talk about is transportation. And I know that you're always looking at widening highways and bike routes. But one of the things that needs to be addressed is the bus system. Here in Lincoln Ca, at Lincoln City, the bus loop bus, that starts at Tanger at 7:30 in the morning and it goes till 6 o'clock at night, six days a week. There are many locals that use it to get back and forth to work, which means on Sundays, the thumb is their only way of getting to work, or getting a cab, or trying to find somebody that'll drive them into work. Or walking. Newport has seven days a week, and the only time that they don't run is Christmas and Thanksgiving days. They have a larger route because, of course, Newport is a larger city. They are financed by transient room tax, and they work with the motels, and the motels give them token, you know, tokens that they can give to the guests of the motel or the vacation rental so they can use the bus. And so they're encouraging to get people off of the roads and using the buses. The bus stops are quite centrally located. They go up and down 101 right now. It would be something that we should look at in the not-too-distant future. My husband has been an ambassador for the city. Tourists come over to him and say, hey, where does the bus stop? Where does the bus go? And my husband, being a very accommodating gentleman, helps them to find the bus and to show them where it would stop, where they want to go, and helped a family of five get on the bus and go down to 51st Street, I think, for whatever was going on down there that day. We need to get these out in the motels and various assorted businesses. We need to get people riding the bus. Get them off the roads. We're plugged. 30 years ago, the city had the opportunity to have a bypass, and the, the businesses said, oh, no, we'd die on the vine, we'd die. Well, it would have taken 20 years to build that bypass if the money was there. And here we are, we're in gridlock. There's no money to expand down into the no-man's land. You know, it'd be nice to get at least a turn lane in there, but, so we have to start looking at other options. You know, I'm sorry, but I'm a little bit old to be riding a bicycle. And walking along 101, coming into town, it's exciting with the trucks going by and the cars and, and, I mean, walking is not necessarily pleasant. I mean, you walk, and all of a sudden, the sidewalk disappears in town. And you have to go out into the, the bike lane and go around a flowerbed so that you can get back on the sidewalk. You know, the bus is a good option, and there is a bus that goes to Newport. From Rose Lodge to Newport is $4. You can't drive down there for $4. And we need to get people putting, getting onto those buses. And I would like to see the, the council start looking at realigning some of the transient room tax and put it into transit. Let's get our tourists off the roads, keep them safe, have a good time. Wouldn't it be nice if, instead of gridlock down there for the fireworks, if we had a bus that went by there and dropped them off and then came back and picked them up and took them back to the motels? I mean, all of this is possible. Right now, the Transit Authority for Lincoln County is starting to do a two-year, a two-year planning. And what they're looking at, they're saying, well, we all need to look 25 years down the road. So I, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing the topic. Anyone else wishes to bring comment to council? All right.
Mayor Anderson, I have one request, which is to add to the consent agenda, request to read ordinances first by title only.
Is that by short title or full title?
Just title. The full title of the ordinance, so, as long as we read the title, it is considered read.
Request to read ordinances by title only?
Right.
Would be item number four?
Yes. Thank you.
No problem with council adding that to the agenda?
No.
All right. So done. Before we close out, Gary, not to put you on the spot, but have you attended any of the transportation bus?
I went down there for the last meeting, and it wasn't where it was supposed to be.
Okay.
But I got their minutes and...
So you're in conversation with...
Yeah, and then Gordy went to a meeting in lieu of me not being able to attend. And I also like to let you know, Mr. Mayor, I ride the bus, and I sometimes ride it with my bicycle. So I've got an idea of what's going on with the bus around here.
Good.
And, and the lady that testified had some good points, and if she wants to talk to me later, I'd be happy to spend some time with her.
Good. But, yeah, just looking if we had any, Dave, do you have any information on...
You know, actually, I can, I probably ought to give you a, a complete rundown on the whole situation, and that's probably too long to do tonight with all these public hearings. I give you kind of a real short version. Yeah, Newport gets better service, and they pay $90,000 for it. We pay 24, 25. We were able to negotiate that with a transit district, and that added an hour a day and a day a week to what they were willing to, to fund. Newport funds all of theirs out of transit room tax. We can't do that currently. And my understanding is that there's very few visitors that use that service in Newport, and also very few visitors that use it here. So it'd be a real stretch. I don't think the state statute would permit us to defer, even if voters would approve that transit room tax, that I'm not sure of that. I, I would love to see, I mean, I, I spent a lot of time trying to get bus service, this loop, into this, into this community and to extend it by a day and an hour. And so it's very near and dear to me, that service, and I'd love to see it more hours, more days. And I'm sure Lincoln County Transit would be willing to do it. Right now, that money would come out of the general fund, and it would sooner or later result in cuts somewhere else. So it's something that council should always consider it, but it's something that we put in the budget and discuss, or it's in the budget message. Yeah, it's an important service, and particularly for the number of people that probably can't afford private transportation, it's an essential service. I'd love to see it extended more. I'm, I'm struggling to find a way to do that. I don't think the transit room tax, it's certainly no quick fix. It might be a long-term solution.
Good. But, and that's why I want to make sure the citizens here that, you know, were well acquainted with the bus system and tracking it, and have even asked a counselor to sit with the county committee to help get a voice, you know, to Northern County on bus transportation. So it's...
I'll, I'll put this on a future agenda at some point, so we can...
It just continued good information that how we...
You know, a few years ago, we didn't have any of this, but this loop service at all. And it was a major addition, and as soon as we added it, yeah, people wanted more. And I don't blame them.
Good. All right. Moving to the next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda, these items are considered routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any counselor may request that an item be removed for separate discussion and action. The consent agenda consists of minutes of the meeting August 8, 2011, license agreement, tribes of Soletz Indians of Oregon. Number three is a wastewater pump station telemetry award. And number four is request to read ordinance by title only. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'd like to remove the minutes from the, from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number two.
All right. And take a motion to approve consent agenda three and four?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor approving consent agenda items three and four, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Mr. Sprague, minutes?
I just have a small item, but it was just the way in which the, the minutes were worded regarding my concern about the parking on Southeast Ohr. I did send through, to Kathy, a, a suggested replacement for that. I don't know if it got taken care of or not. She's gone, apparently, so...
Why don't we, then, the appropriate thing would just be to wait on these and bring them back, since you've spoken with Kathy, and what's reflected in here is not...
Emailed it to her. Yes, I would, I would appreciate it if we did that.
So why don't we just pull that and, if we could have the minutes come back, ask for the next council meeting for this thing?
That's fine.
Is that all right? All right. Chester, license agreement?
Mr. Hawker, this is a point of clarification. On your memo, August 17, Golf Course Water License Agreement, line number seven, "To overcome this, the parties agreed that while the delivery system would be part of the city, et cetera," if we strike the word "while," that sentence makes sense to me. With the "while" in there, it does not. With, with, if we eliminate "while," the sentence says, "To overcome this, the parties agreed that the delivery system would be part of the city's municipal water system." And the arrangement would be spelled out in a license agreement to be approved.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. That, that doesn't change the agreement. That just changes, that would just change my memo, which has no legal effect.
With the word "while" in there, I'm waiting for some modifier or some...
Yeah, I guess it wasn't an artful way to complete the sentence.
Okay.
But what you're approving is not the staff report, but the agreement.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Another clarification is on the Golf Course, Lincoln City, Soletz Tribe Agreement PDF, 31 kilobytes.
Uh-huh.
And my question is around the additional point of diversion.
Okay.
That leads me to think we've got two points of diversion.
Yes, that's correct.
Is that true?
That's correct. We currently have a diversion, a legal, authorized, certificated diversion on Rock Creek. There's a, there's a dam, a diversion structure on Rock Creek, and that will remain. This is a second and additional point of diversion on the other side of the lake.
Okay. And number, under number four, Soletz Point of Diversion and Place of Use, in the lower half of the second paragraph, the parties understand, the parties understand and agree that this agreement relates to the addition of a point of diversion and not a change in the point of diversion.
Right. We don't want to give up our, our primary point of diversion. This agreement, the agreement you're referring to, by the way, is, was approved a year ago, or whenever it was approved. And it lasts, I believe, for 20 years. So if we change the point of diversion and the agreement terminated and, and we didn't renew it, we'd be left without a way to use our water. So that's why we keep the original point of diversion and ask for an additional point of diversion, in this case downstream.
And did I hear you say the agreement was, has already been agreed to by the city and the tribe?
Yeah, that, that agreement that you're referring to was a 2010 agreement that council approved. This agreement before tonight, I, and I included that principally for the new council members who wouldn't be familiar with how, what had happened before. And this is going to get a little bit confusing here. That was an attachment to the 2010 May 24 memo that I put, but we found out that in Adobe, when we send this out to the public, we can't attach an attachment to an attachment. So I had to break that agreement out of the May 24, 2010 memo, and it's just there for background. All those attachments, except the Golf Course Water License Agreement, are simply background The only thing that, that is new is the license agreement and the, and the August 17 memo. Those other things are just there for background, and I may not have made that clear.
Okay. All right. I, I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Along that same line, with the new point of diversion, I didn't see anything in any of the stuff that I read where somebody is responsible for maintaining that.
I believe it is in there.
Maintaining the diversion point?
Pardon me?
Maintaining the diversion point?
The new diversion point, yeah. Because you're going to have screens and what have you, and they're, they're going to get clogged, and I just thought that somebody needed to be responsible for doing that. I thought it was probably would be the tribe.
It is in here. The Soletz Tribe agrees to operate and maintain the diversion structure at the Soletz Point of Diversion in a manner that meets or exceeds federal, state, local, tribal standards all times during the term of the agreement.
That's in the license agreement?
Right. Yes, sir.
I missed that. Okay, thank you very much.
It's, it's at the end of paragraph four. It, you're, I mean, you're right that it wasn't in the original agreement, and that was, and we knew that at the time, but we also had a verbal agreement at, at that time that they would deal with that in the license agreement.
Okay.
So it is in here.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions on the license agreement?
No.
Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion, then, to approve the license agreement with the Confederate tribes, Soletz Indians of Oregon?
So moved.
A second?
Seconded.
Have a motion approved in a second for the license agreement to be approved? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Moving on. We have special order of business proclamation. This would be the time for David Bowman. Mr. Bowman, please come forward.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Bringing before you tonight a proclamation, September 16, 19...
Mr. Bowman, could you get real close to the mic and, you know, maybe give your name and address? Would be great, then.
David Bowman, 4715 North Highway 101.
Thank you.
The American Legion got its charter from Congress on September 16, 1919. There are over 40 members of the American Legion living in Lincoln City at the current time. We're trying to get the post active again. They've been lapsed in having meetings for the last several years. And this proclamation brings to the forefront the effort that all of our veterans have made for the United States, and that the charter has produced such things as... States, and that the charter has produced such things as Veterans Affairs Medical Facilities, GI Bill, and such things, and I would ask for your signature on the proclamation.
Would you mind reading the proclamation while we're on TV and think of your public out there?
Proclamation, American Legion Month, September 2011. Whereas the American Legion was chartered by the Congress of the United States of America on September 16, 1919, and whereas, since its founding, the American Legion and its 3 million members have continually exhibited a deep sense of pride in the community, ensuring a strong America by serving veterans, their families, and the children of our nation, and whereas, the American Legion was responsible for the creation of the original GI Bill, enabling millions of veterans to obtain assistance in education and home loans, and whereas, the American Legion was instrumental in the passage of legislation creating the Department of Veterans Affairs, and whereas, the American Legion continues to work for the constitutional amendment to protect the American flag from desecration, securing mandatory funding for adequate operation of the Veterans Affairs Medical Facilities, operates a family support network for families of active-duty military personnel and members of the National Guard and Reserve, and whereas, the more than 25,000 legionnaires belonging to 120 posts across Oregon, along with 10,000 members, the sons of the American Legion and the American Legion Auxiliary statewide, collectively volunteer thousands of hours to assist volunteers in their communities, and whereas, Lincoln City American Legion Post 97 strongly supports veterans, their families, and our community at large, therefore, be it resolved that Lincoln City Council hereby proclaims September 2011 American Legion Month throughout the city of Lincoln City, Oregon, and encourages citizens to celebrate many contributions made by the members of the American Legion Department of Oregon over the past 90 years.
Thank you, sir. We're pleased to do it. So that'd be, the month of September would be American Legion Month.
Yes.
Could you share with us a little bit of the post here? You're trying to reactivate it, and what would be some of the initial projects?
Currently, the post is inactive because of age. So many of our veterans in the American Legion have been 30, 40-year members, and they're approaching the age of their late 80s, a majority in Lincoln City, with the active members, and they aren't able to get out in the evenings, so that became a problem for them. We're trying to arrange so that they can have a noontime meeting during the week when they feel comfortable getting out in the community, being part of it. One of the things I've found, I've called around 30 members in the last several weeks, and one of the things is, a lot of them feel homebound, and we need to get some of the younger people interested, and that's one of the things I'd like to bring up in a future meeting, is a way to get the message out to the community so that we can get younger American Legion members who will go out. We have capability now, and the American Legion has put together a program called the American Legion Foundation, and it's available to any post in the American Legion to go out and do 501(c)(3) contributions from the community, and those will almost entirely go to children and youth programs. The American Legion in different community sponsors, American Legion Baseball, Boys and Girls State Programs, and Oratorical. They also have Firefighter of the Year, Teacher of the Year, Lawn Forth Officer of the Year, and so there are many different things that the American Legion does.
Oh, good. And how might some of the veterans contact you? Is there a way to get ahold of you to become...
Yes, I believe I left my name and phone number with you.
Do you hang out at community center, or is there some...
That's one of the things that I'm going to start doing is...
Start getting, great.
I currently go there for activities, but...
Right.
The one thing that, is another thing that we need to look at, is the county Veteran Service Officer only comes here one day a month, and with as many veterans as there are in the community, if we could do anything to, you know, get him to come to Lincoln City more often, it'd be very helpful.
Good. Thank you very much for coming tonight, and we're honored to do the proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your service. Great. We'll get that back to you if that's all right.
Thank you.
All right. We've asked to have number five removed off the Agenda Special Order, and we'll move then to Street Overlay Bid Award presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Wait for you, and I'll throw my memo here first. Turn on the camera for me there. So we did go out for bid for our 2011 overlay project, and in your packet is the contract award document, and that was August 11 that we received the bids, and our low bidder for that project was Road and Driveway Company in the amount of $368,954.84. And I wanted to, I gave you a little bit of background on how streets are selected, and we do, I'm not going to read every one of these bullets, but we do have condition. They're visually assessed yearly by the streets crew and engineering staff and myself, and they are given a rating of good, fair, or poor based on distresses in the asphalt pavement, including longitudinal and transverse cracking, rutting, utility trenches, street cuts, and severely cracked or alligatored streets, and those can develop potholes and also just having to be reconstructed from the base of the street. And then we also look at age as a factor, and usage, the locations, and future water and sewer infrastructure needs, and once we start investigating those streets, sometimes they are put onto another year's overlay so that we can do sewer improvements and street improvements. And so this is our overlay for this year. We have Northeast Devilslake Boulevard, and I have a couple other slides. It'll show these a little bit closer, but as you can see, we have streets throughout Lincoln City. That's another thing that we try to do, is spread them out throughout the city so not one neighborhood is getting the complete benefit of the overlay. So the scope of work, we construct a two-inch-thick asphalt pavement overlay, and we do asphalt pavement removal where needed, the cracked ceiling I mentioned, adjustment of existing public and private utilities, and so those are manhole risers and valve risers that we coordinate with that contractor and put in, so we have a smooth surface and don't have any failures on those. We do subgrade stabilization where needed, and that's one of the things we try to avoid getting to that point, because then all your money goes into reconstructing that road instead of doing the maintenance on it. Reconstruction and feathering of existing driveway aprons and permanent striping. And so this is just a schedule. We evaluated the streets, and that was in June and July. August, we open bids, and then we have the contract award to you tonight. City crews are now in the process of updating the infrastructure, and those are water services and sewer services, bringing a few of the sewer services to the outside of the pavement. And many of the sewer services are stubbed off of the line, but they didn't take them all the way to the edge of the road, and so we're bringing them up to the edge of the asphalt. And so we would begin construction in September, and all of this is weather-related. And so those are the items that I mentioned earlier in the memo.
We have great weather in September, don't we?
We do.
Okay.
We do. Sometimes it gets down to, you know, the last few days of nice weather.
Baby in the rain.
You never know what our weather's going to do, so. And this is our street condition report that we have, so this lists the good, fair, poor, and gravel streets.
So all the streets in Lincoln City are graded, and that's what this reflects?
Yes.
Okay. And from this, you pick next year's?
Yes. Yes, and it'll depend on, you know, buildout, how much of an area is built out.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I was surprised at the distance between the high and low bid. I don't know that I've ever seen that much distance before, and is there a reason for that? Other than the fact that somebody wanted more money?
Well, Road and Driveway is a local company.
Right.
And so their mobilization on our bid sheet, that was the largest difference, was the total cost for mobilization. Road and Driveway was $7,450, and the Hawk Construction was $30,000, and Baker Rock was $29,000, and Knife River Corporation was $60,000. And so that was the main discrepancy. The price per ton for Road and Driveway was $69.42 a ton. Hawk Construction was $78.75, and the same with Baker Rock, $78.50, and then Knife River was $83 per ton. And Road and Driveway wants the business. I believe they had a really reasonable bid on our Drift Creek, or actually, it was Anderson Creek Project. The county put that out to bid after our waterline project on Anderson Creek, and they gave a very low bid on that project as well.
And they do good work.
They do very good work.
That's great. Any other questions from council while...
I do have, this is more rating of the streets, but I do have, so that's Northeast Devilslake Boulevard at the north end, and that is, depicts some of the area on that street. And this street has been put on the back of the list because of the Villages of Cascade Head Project, the Lincoln Palisades subdivision. We didn't want to pave it and have it torn up after years of construction, but now it's time to do something with that street. And where's our next one here? So this is Northwest Mast Avenue, and this street is also deteriorating. We're starting to get weeds coming up in the cracks of the street there, and we have a very large utility cut down this street as well. And it's a nice residential street. It's not really used by our tourist industry too much, but our local people. And then we have Northwest Inlet Avenue, and that was last overlaid in 1983, and it has many utility cuts, and then this is the back entrance to Kylo's. This is actually a city street, and it's deteriorated to the point of, you know, the utilities are becoming the storm. Drain here needs to be fixed, and it's just sinking and falling apart. And then this is an area of it that has many road cuts in here as well. And then we have Southeast Inlet, and that's behind Radio Shack from Ninth Street on, and you can see, this street is major utility cuts, and this is a gas line connection, and so you can see how this patching has deteriorated over the years, but the entire street is like that.
Is this an example, Lila, where we're going to have to address the base, the foundation of the street?
Not too much. There's some that we'll have to dig out, but not a lot at this point. And then we have Southwest Harbor Avenue, which is back behind City Hall and then further behind Gubbers and that area, and so this part is just deteriorating. So this is a little bit, this is the other part of it. And so we have road cuts and damage there, and then we are, we're taking this down to, off of Bard Road, onto the highway, because those sections, even if they're not really deteriorated, you wouldn't go back and just do a small approach like that, so we're addressing that as well. And we're taking the ones that go to the highway, when the ODOT came through and did their maintenance project, they couldn't get into any of the driveways, so they saw cut near the fog line, and they left some very old asphalt, and it's dangerous for bicyclists and people walking along those sections, and so we're going out all the way to that edge, and at least we'll have a few areas that we've been able to clean And then we have Southeast 32nd Street, and this is in Nell Scott. This street has been also put on the back burner because it was involved in the ODOT realignment project, but if we don't take care of it, it's a large street, and the majority of it would be reused even within a project, but it needs to be redone. And that's a road that the high school and the schools use. And so those were our bid results. And so we're asking council to recommend, or we're, staff's recommending that we award the bid to Road and Driveway Company, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of
Any questions, council?
I'd just like to point out that we had an estimate that it was going to cost us $570,000. Is that right, Lila?
Yes, and that was in line, and that was a staff number, and that was in line with what the other, you know, going rates are, so Road and Driveway really did give us a good bid on this project.
Thank you.
In light of that, is there an opportunity to, while you're doing overlay, to add another section?
We could do that. We have...
That's budgeted, right?
Our actual budget is $700,000, but it's not all for overlay. We're doing the sidewalk on East Devilslake Road near the post office, and so that'll be coming to you soon, and we also have some drainage behind the subway, but we could, if you can, if you wanted to authorize anything additional, we could put on a couple of other streets that I don't have a lot of utility repair to do.
We had good bids.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we certainly could do that. That would be...
I don't know if it's better to just leave it into the pool and take, that way you're able to look at other projects?
Well, it might enable us to have, of course, funding's going to be tough for the next few years, and it might enable us to have a good-size overlay project next year.
Rather than...
We really don't have anything budgeted for next year. We're not doing an overlay. So at this price, if I can, I definitely have a large list of streets, so I could find a couple of other streets to add to this at this rate.
It's not a bad decision to make. We know it's a good price.
Right.
We know that putting money into the local economy is good right now. Well, I wouldn't hesitate to say it's a good move.
So how would we facilitate that?
How much are we allowed to alter the contract without another bid? How much?
10%. 10%.
I'd have to double-check. I think it's 10%.
That doesn't give us a lot more.
If you want to authorize at least that as an extra, I mean, that would be another small area that we can do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I would think that if we could find a way to do that, it would be worthwhile to do it while the price is low, because next year it's going to be more expensive.
Exactly. I mean, with this bidder, if just do, you know, at that, whatever that price figures out to, to add another street to it, if that's...
If the work is related to the original project...
It would be.
So we're talking another, maybe $40,000?
Mm-hmm.
No.
10%.
10%.
Oh, to add, no, I was looking at the, to go up to the 570 that we, we're not able to do that.
No, the amount of the contract, which is 368,954.
Correct. So another forty would still give us another street that we could pick out.
Oh, would it? Well, that certainly is, to me, worth doing. Okay, and then leave the other into the pot to pick up on another project?
Yes, what we have left, I don't know how much our projects are gonna be for the drainage and what they're going to come out for the sidewalk, but...
So the, would we include in our motion then approving this award, but asking, authorizing to increase it by ten percent?
Up to an additional ten percent.
Up to an additional ten percent. Any other discussion? Would that certainly entertain a motion then?
Well, I would move that we award the contract to Road and Driveway Company in the amount of $368,954.84, plus ten percent.
To expand the contract?
To expand the contract.
Of an additional ten percent?
Additional ten percent, yes.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to award the bid to Road and Driveway Company, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $368,954,084, and expand the contract by, and up to ten percent. Roll call, please.
Maricas?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Ellingson?
Yes.
Air Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Anderson, can you just clarify? I think we skipped over item number five.
We did.
My understanding is that that's been requested to be pulled?
Correct.
For later time?
Yes. Is that...
Yes, that is correct. That's the head debate trail grant. And I'm still looking at the agency obligation and if we can meet our obligation to that grant. So probably bring it back at the next council meeting.
No problem. Thank you. All right. We have Department Committee reports, Art Committee.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Nice to see you. Thank you for coming.
My pleasure. I'm here on behalf of the Lincoln City Public Art Committee. And I believe in your packets, we included a brief overview of all of the committee's projects and their cost. So I hope everybody did indeed get that. Most of the projects are completed, and they are installed. I am here to discuss the status of those that are still in progress. So I'll give you a little update. The first project I'd like to discuss is the Water Creature for Regatta Grounds that was awarded to artist Heidi Erickson. This project has grown in complexity, quote-unquote, from Heidi. I visited the piece in early August, and I can report the elaborate, that the elaborate framework for this piece is basically completed. And I do have a photo of it. It was a dark area. It was hard to photograph, but if anybody's interested how far she's gotten to this date. She has purchased the materials for, so we have a skeleton, and she's purchased the materials for the skin and is ready to be assembled. All of the exterior materials are recycled and have been carefully selected to ensure durability and resistance to coastal corrosion. So she spent a lot of time making sure this piece is gonna really hold up. However, it is far from complete. And the artist is requesting an extension until August 31st to complete the piece.
Something other than August 31st?
I mean, December 31st, excuse me. Her original contract was in September. The size of the piece has also gotten larger than originally planned. It's kind of one of these creative moments where it just kept going and going. And she feels that it would be too large for the original space that was allocated for it, which was down in Regatta Park at the lower level where the flag pole is. Now ironically, that also has recently been landscaped. So I agree with her, the piece is too large for that spot, and it would be kind of redundant to tear up the investment and the nice landscaping in order to put the piece there. So the committee would like to review a new location for this piece, hopefully still on the Regatta grounds, but we're looking into what the possibilities are. And as before, we need to work with Parks and Recreation on that because they maintain that area, and some of the spaces have dual usage. So that's part of what needs to be looked at, too. But as far as this evening, we would like the council, we recommend and would hope that you would vote to extend this contract. She's very committed to the piece. She has put an inordinate amount of hours, which is kind of her issue. And it will be completed and be quite wonderful, I believe.
And the original contract called for it to be done first of September?
It's in September, yeah.
And she's recognizing she's taking longer, so just asking for a four-month extension?
Correct. Yeah, and she feels very confident that she can complete it at that period of time.
And the installation is city installation, or?
Correct.
Okay, so that... Questions regarding extension, or any problems with that?
Also, the city engineer is going out before we put the skin on. Both the committee and the artist wanted to make sure that it was built, you know, to specifications, and it's quite sturdy, so that's in the works.
Would you be coming back then to council as far as a new location? Because I guess also up for grabs then is a change of location. But it still may be Regatta Park. But you'd come back with a recommendation as to, after working with Parks and Rec?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any...
Just one question. In looking at this budget that you gave us, I only see two projects on there that are called pending projects. Now, is that the one that we're talking about now?
There are actually three more that I want to discuss with you. The one we're talking about here is Regatta Grounds Dragon.
Okay, but there's nothing there showing that it's, that the commitments are pending or anything. Is there an interim payment that's made on these contracts? Or is it all at one time?
No, there is, generally they run, I don't oversee the contracts, but they are in four payments so that the artist has working capital as the piece progresses.
We don't show that here, though, do we? Other than they're showing expended, is all.
Correct, yeah. This is just a really kind of a rough look at where our budget went and our money went.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
How much, do you recall how much was earmarked for the Regatta Dragon?
It's $20,000.
That, oh.
Yeah.
Okay, it just said that's how much is expended. And then in the earmarked category, there's nothing. Anyway. That means we paid for the whole thing already, is that right?
You know, I'm not really sure about that. I do not believe that's the case. Yeah, I think the final payment is not awarded until the piece is completed and the artist is...
We haven't expended the 20,000, then.
Correct, correct.
We should probably have that changed.
Yeah.
Does anyone have an issue with extending the contract time for additional four months? So does that need a motion or consensus?
I think consensus is fine if it's clear that it's to extend to December 31st.
Correct.
A completed project?
If we don't extend it?
Right.
We probably end up with something that's half-finished.
A skeleton.
Very astute, counselor, very astute. But negotiate all you want.
Yeah.
You've had these a couple of times when there's one person working on the project. It could be for a variety of reasons. Sometimes it just is more complicated. The other things have happened when the artist has actually gotten sick and has needed more time, so...
So that I'm interpreting, go ahead and extend the four months, too. That one was easy. What else do you have for us?
Thank you very much. I wanted to just give you a quick update while I'm here. On our other projects, the D River project titled Dancing Water by Suzanne Lee is getting very close to installation. The concrete pad has been poured, and the artist is, I believe, working on the final details of assembling the piece. I do not have an exact date for the installation, but I think it's gonna be coming within the next month. She has made a few changes there again, responding to the corrosive environment. She has changed from powder coating to using automotive paint on this piece. After doing some research, she found that that's gonna hold up longer, and the colors will remain more intense. She's also changed the shape from circles to triangles and a few little things like that. But all of them, we feel are gonna be improvements to the piece.
And this is the sculpture. We had trouble with the installation, dealing with other government bodies to have permission?
Yeah, that one has also been delayed, but not due to the artist's fault. It was just that we needed to clear with the Army Corps of Engineers and through all the agencies, so... But we've done it. We're almost ready on that one. Okay, and the other one that...
One more.
Yeah.
The Dancing Waters project, that's on budget in spite of the changes?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the Let There Be Arts program that we funded with the school district, as you probably have all noticed, is the painted murals on the entrance to the city hall. So that has recently been completed also. Nice colorful addition.
It is, and it's very colorful if you come down, you know, 101 and can spot it right away.
Yeah.
Turning into the parking, yeah. So encourage citizens to drive in. Don't try to gawk from 101.
Yeah.
Drive into the parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, I think it successfully catches people's eye. And I believe that there was close to 50 to 100 students were supposed to be involved in that project. So it gave a lot of kids an opportunity to participate in an art project. And then we have got, our next project is the Tile Spa Wall mural. And I spoke with the artist this afternoon, and she is also right on schedule. They're proceeding the final firing of the tiles was, should be complete by the end of this week. And that piece, the goal is to install it while the community center closes the pool area for their annual maintenance. And so we figured that would be the least intrusive time because it is a very large piece, and it's gonna be quite a bit to, it's gonna be actually mortared to the walls of the building. And so they are on target. I don't believe that the actual date for closing the pool has been set, but it's usually at the end of September, sometime in there. So that's not a specific date, but the artist, and as far as our end of it goes, will be ready.
Great, that's good.
Yeah. And the only other outstanding project was what we call the Tourist Project, which is one that we basically chose not to pursue. But we did fund and have completed two of our wooden tourists. One of them got installed this weekend at the Glass Center, the Jennifer Sears Studio. And the other one, I'm negotiating to put up by the Cultural Center. But they have to go through their board meeting, and they've had some delays there. So we are working on getting those two pieces up, even though the overall project, we didn't pursue. But we still have two pieces that can be used somewhere.
That's great.
So those concludes the Art Committee.
Oh, thank you very much for coming. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right. City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I wonder if we could, you know, I guess I should explain for the public that the order of the agenda is set by ordinance, although council can change that order at the meeting. Item number eight, I would like to say, can we do later in the meeting, time permitting? I recognize that we've got public hearings ahead and ordinances that I think take precedence over this. This is not time-critical. It can come up at any time. And I'm wondering if you could decide that later. Let me bump item number eight for now. If there's time later and council wishes to indulge it tonight, we'd put it back on.
That sounds fine.
Sure. And the other two items, I can do pretty quick. Item number nine is response to the concerns at Hostelletre Park. At the last meeting, there was an allegation that city employees permitted something to happen that shouldn't have happened. And I had Richard Townsend do the research on that, and there's a nice one-page memo in the packet. Basically, there was a private party, not a commercial enterprise, but a private party. No permit is needed. It would be wrong to require it of a private party. It could have been a commercial enterprise and could have been permitted. And there's several different provisions under the code where it could have been permitted. But that wasn't asked for because that's not what it was. So it's like any other private group using a park. Unless they have, unless they make a reservation at one of our few areas that can be reserved, there's no advance notice to the city. It's a park. It's available for public use. That's its purpose. So with that, if anybody wants any more information, they can read that memo. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention to people out there that may be having some trouble with our packets, with our public packets. As Mr. Sprague demonstrated at the last meeting, he was having trouble with our packet, seeing the cover page, which is the agenda, and going back and forth between that cover page and the various attachments. What's happened is Adobe has issued a new version, Adobe X. They show it as Adobe X. And people that have downloaded that, looking at our packets, it's no longer easy to click back and forth between the cover sheet and the attachments. It's a laborious process now. We're trying to get to the bottom of this and see if there's a different way of doing this. We, what we do is take the agenda and attach each item separately to each separate agenda item. So if you click on the agenda item, the attachment comes up. And sometimes there's attachments to attachments. Now, that, to me, is the most logical way of doing it. Other cities, some other cities at least, give you one continuous document where there might be a thousand pages. It's just one document, and bookmark it. And we can do it that way, and you can get around maybe a little easier. The difficulty is then if you want to save one piece of that, you have to go through an extraction process. And so Adobe threw us for a loop when they introduced this new reader, the free reader that comes out. My recommendation is not to upgrade right now, or you're gonna have some problems going back and forth. We're gonna try to get to the bottom of this and see if there's a way that is easy for the public to use. Right now, if they have version 10, it's gonna be a little difficult. And the rest I can save till later in the evening if there's time.
Great. Counselor?
Mr. Hawker, when will Schooner Creek be closed? Work starting?
Will you lose, Lila?
Yeah.
Don't know. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I don't think it's varied from the original schedule, which was right after Labor Day. I know they're prepping right now for it. They have the closure signs out, ready to set. Mr. Ellingson may, acted like maybe you know?
Well, no, I just remember seeing a sign down there, "Soon."
Yeah, it is.
You know, "Soon."
I thought I read in the newspaper that it was gonna be the end of September, which was earlier than I thought it was originally scheduled for.
September or August?
August.
Oh, August, yeah. But I think that's the, I read the same article. It's misleading where it's prep work that's getting done, the road actually not closed until... it's prep work that's getting done. The road actually not closed until, I think, after Labor Day.
That's my understanding, but, you know, it's ODOT. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Counselor DeJevs?
Is this a time to ask a question about an unrelated subject, or should I maybe wait to the end of the?
Yeah, why don't we wait? If we could, we could get to these. Mr. Strucker, thank you on the update and Mr. Townsend for the park update. It raised enough. The other one on that same evening was the 15th Street, Northwest 15th and Mailboxes. And you had informed us a little bit on that. And again, for the public, we had worked with the different post offices and post office masters.
We had worked with the old postmaster, with the new postmaster, and then already moved it once at taxpayers' money. And I guess I feel like the city went maybe even a step further than you might expect in getting two different postmasters to approve it and then also even at that, moving it at a citizen request. I don't know how many times we do that, you know. So I think it was a good faith effort on our part to do it right and...
Good. Thank you. It's, why don't we then, and we will hold item eight and see if there's time and bring that back at the...
Time and energy.
Energy. All right. So why don't we then go to public hearings? This would be under I, number 11, to receive written or oral testimony concerning the proposed zoning ordinance amendment Z O A 2011-01, attached single family in R1 zones. And we kept the public hearing open from last meeting, just in case we had some citizens that wanted to come forward.
Actually, I want to come forward a little bit if I could.
You're always welcome.
It came up, actually after the hearing, there is a provision in the draft ordinance, actually on the page that has the table on it, I guess the third page in the draft ordinance, where we would change it to allow for attached single-family homes have lots that are 25 feet wide. That is a potential problem in areas along the coast where we have 50-foot wide lots that, because of the way they're described, go out to the ocean. And so while the actual building area at the top of the bluff or something is relatively small, might be 5,000 square feet or less, it might be a 10,000 or 12,000 or 14,000 square foot lot legally. So what I want to, I looked, there's 249 lots in the city that are at least 10,000 square feet that are on the coast, on the coastline. 241 of them are built on already, so there's eight that aren't. Many of them are motels. But I, just to prevent there being an issue where you have a 50-foot wide lot, it ends up getting divided into 25, you get two lots. So we're an unintended doubling of the density on that lot. I wanted to suggest on that page that instead of saying 25 feet for attached single-family homes, it'd be 35 feet. That would still allow you accommodate the fact that the setback on one side of each structure has gone away, but because they're attached to each other. But preclude that 50-foot lot becoming two 25-foot lots where it ends up being a, you know, a sort of manipulation as a result of the land that's really on the beach.
Good point, because that was one of the key questions we were talking about last time was, does this somehow raise density? And it wasn't the intention to raise density.
Exactly.
So your suggestion would, you know, to keep it then would, to make this change from 25 to 35 would keep no increase in density?
Yes, yes, it would. And I think the city recorder can do that by interlineation rather than having to bring another amended ordinance back.
Oh, okay. Okay. Anything, did council have any questions of staff from last meeting that you were thinking of as we had gone over this and opened it up for public hearing before we, if anybody else, you all right?
No, I don't have any questions. I'd just like to thank you for catching that, Mr. Townsend.
Yeah, good call.
Excellent. Let's...
Just for the sake of those who want to make sure we have it right, do you know where the specific reference is to 25 versus 35? It says the max, I'm probably looking at the wrong one, so I want to make sure I have it right.
Actually, it's unfortunately, it's not, it's not, there's not a line number, but it's under 17.16.070, lot requirements, in the third column, lot width. There's two places where it says 25 feet attached, one under R15, one under R17.5. And I would suggest changing both of those, just read instead 35 feet attached.
I think I have it. Okay. Thank you.
This would be the time to entertain any public comment regarding this proposed ordinance change. Please.
I was here last week due to some economic reasons, and I just had one final point to add.
Can you even?
Rebecca proposed Portland, Oregon. And when somebody mentioned that they had thought that condo refinancing was easy, I contacted Maurice Grant, who's a senior mortgage broker at Director's Mortgage. And he sent me an email along with the December 1, 2010, the general eligibility requirements for all condo projects. Put in red the email and then I put it in red here and I'll enter it into evidence that says that no single entity, the same individual, investor group, partnership, or corporation, other than the developer during the initial marketing period, may own more than 10% of the total units in the project. So you can see that for small condo groupings like ours, makes it impossible to get federal refinancing. So I just wanted to enter that as, this was as of December 1, 2010. So that's all I have to add. Just give this to her.
That'd be fine. Thank you very much. Any other public comment regarding this ordinance change? All right. Hearing none. This would be the time then to motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Got a motion to close public hearing with a second. All odes in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Then, any discussion before we go to next item, because we'll, that's on item 16 under ordinances to actually vote upon.
I just wanted to clarify what I understand that that change is. So you have, it's section 17.16.070, which starts on page three. The table appears on page four of the ordinance and it's the third column. And for the R15 zone, the attached minimum lot width would change from 25 to 35 feet. And for the R17.5 zone, for the required minimum for the lot width, would change from 25 feet to 35 feet for attached. So when you, the ordinance comes up later this evening, those will be the changes that you include.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Our next item then is to receive written and/or and/or oral testimony concerning the proposed zoning ordinance amendment Z O A 2011-05, building height amendments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before this starts, may I just ask the city attorney a question?
Certainly.
This is an unusual circumstance, at least for me, insofar as when this matters came up to the planning commission, I testified concerning it. And the reason I did that is I had talked to legal counsel relative to the type of hearing this is and was led to believe that my testifying would not violate any ethical obligations I had as a member of the council. In fact, I was also told that one train of thought would allow me to hear this as a council member, that I, at the planning commission meeting, stated that I would not do that as a council member, nor would I vote on this. So my question to the attorney is whether I should sit here at the desk while this is being discussed or if I should remove myself to the audience.
I think you should remove yourself. Thank you.
Actually, I had two questions. When it comes time for public testimony, would I be able to offer some public testimony?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Then, Attorney, can you keep us legal, please, with the script?
The public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering amendments to the zoning ordinance. The proposal is identified as zoning ordinance amendment 2011-05, and the city of Lincoln City is initiating the proposed amendments. The proposed ordinance would amend chapter 17.52.190 regarding maximum building height to make an allowance for properties in flood hazard zones. The ordinance would also delete the definition of height from section 17.34.005, the Nelscott Plan District. The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter on August 16, 2011, and forwarded a recommendation for approval. The city council's role in this legislative process is to consider any written or oral testimony as well as information from staff and make a final decision as to ordinance amendments or new ordinances. Are there any objections to the council's jurisdiction? Counselors, do you have any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest? I believe Counselor Ellingson has stepped down. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the unamended portions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I will summarize the public hearing procedures which the city council has adopted. A brochure outlining the procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. The staff will present a report and respond to questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the council asks questions, your time responding to those questions will not be included in the time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name, please state your name and mailing address clearly and also write it on the sign-up sheet. Please speak directly into the microphone, which I'm trying to do right now, and begin by stating your name and mailing address. If you also have written testimony to submit, please provide a copy to the recorder. Staff.
Thank you.
Good point.
Mayor, council members, this is a request to make a couple sets of changes to the way we measure building height in the city. You may recall, right now, we measure building height from either existing grade or approved grade. Approved grade comes after grading for an approved subdivision or PUD and that kind of thing. We measure from whatever point that is to the highest point of the building, with one exception, that's in Nelscott. Through an oversight, in Nelscott, the consultant's draft that we had done some time ago said to measure to the midpoint of the roof, midpoint of the gable. That should not have stayed in and we're just asking that that be eliminated and so that in Nelscott, we measure height the way we do everywhere else in the city. The other thing is relates to the floodplain, how we measure building height in the flood zones. There are three flood zones, and I'll explain a little bit more, but the proposal is to measure building height in what's called the AE or VE flood zones, which I'll explain what those are, from one foot above the mapped base flood elevation. And then what's called the AO zone, to measure from one foot above the mapped flood depth. Now, the AO zone is, it's an area where flood depths, they have flood depths by definition of one to three feet, usually sheet flow on sloping terrain. That's, I think everywhere in Lincoln City, I've pored over the FEMA maps, floodplain maps, and every place I've found is one foot, it's the mapped flood depth there. So, and we have some maps coming up a little bit, and they will be shown in yellow or green, depending on where on the map they are. There's also what's called an AE zone, that's the 100-year floodplain, that, or flood zone, and has a base flood elevation that has been determined. And that's going to be shown in pink. And then there's the VE zone, which is a coastal zone, also has a base flood elevation determined, and that has a, it's called a velocity hazard as a result from wave action. Those are shown in blue on the maps. So here is the first map, and please bear with me on these. These are, you're going to take some explaining. This is the south end of Cutler City. The pink area is the AE zone, mapped flood elevation of 14 feet. What that means is that the lowest floor of a house or a structure that's habitable structure that's built in the AE zone with a depth of 14 feet has to be at a level of 15 feet, one foot above base flood elevation. Now, this heavy line down here that you see running along the bottom is the 10-foot elevation. You can see that, and these are two-foot contours, you can see a dashed line just immediately above it, that's the 12-foot contour, which indicates that the top of essentially the bluff or the seawall or whatever is there is at about 12 feet. So the flood elevation, base flood elevation is about two feet above that. And the, so a building's ground floor would have to be at 15 feet, so three feet above the ground elevation. And you see it varies. I mean, it's right here, it goes 12, then to 14, 16, 18. So it goes up, you know, there is slope up. Here's an area of 20 feet over here. But this is, actually, I should point out, this is in the AE zone. I probably shouldn't have directed you to that. But you can see in the A, that was the AO, in the AE here, the pink, it could be as much as three feet. Allowing an extra amount of height as a result of these proposed amendments would allow someone to build three feet higher than they could now. So they were 35-foot height limit now. They could build up to what would amount to 38 feet under this proposal. In the AO zone, again, it's one foot. So they would get, if you're starting at, or whatever the ground level, they'd get two feet. Whatever the ground level is, they would get two feet. That's one of the simpler areas. This is probably the most complex. This is Taft. You can see there's VE zones along the bay, 21, 18, 16, 19, and 16 feet. AE zones of 13, 14, 15, 16, 16, 18, and 19. So it's quite complex there. The 10-foot contour is this heavy line again. This property right here is where Mo's is. And you can see there's three contour lines very close to each other. That's showing that that's where the riprap is. And so the ground level there is at about 16 feet. So they would probably get one foot of additional elevation there, perhaps. Some of these other areas, here it's 15. Out here, the ground level is probably at about 14, or maybe a little bit less in some areas. So they would get one to three feet probably. And you can see, it varies all over the place there. But as I said, this is probably the most complex area in the city. And why it's different like this is known but to FEMA. about 14, or maybe a little bit less in some areas, so they would get one to three feet probably, and you can see, it varies all over the place there, but as I said, this is probably the most complex area in the city, and why it's different like this is known but to FEMA. But, I was trying to point out that there are areas where it's different from place to place. This is another area of Taft, on the east side of the highway, it's AE 14, just where I'm marking here, this is where the old college is, the old fire station. You can see this 10-foot elevation here actually is the top of the drainage channel that runs through there. This is a 12-foot elevation, sort of wandering through the site, so with an AE 14, it would be between roughly 10 to 12 or more feet, so the amount you'd pick up would be conceivably, you know, three to five feet would happen there, if, under the proposed amendment, the way it was originally proposed. This is Nelscott, we have a VE zone. This more or less vertical line through here is the 20-foot elevation line, and just above that, you can barely see it, is a dashed contour, and then another one a little bit further. So, the top of the seawall there is 22 to 24 feet, so the VE of 27, if it was 22 feet, you'd get five plus one, which would be six feet, or at 24, you'd get four feet. But, same area, just a little bit further south, southwest 35th, where the new beach access is, and the new restrooms and so on, there's a line, 27 for VE, 34 feet for VE, and right next to it, seven feet difference. These lots, there's three lots right here at the base of this hill, you can see how close together these contours are, there's a steep hill going up. These lots are at about 20, 22, 25, about 24 to 26 feet elevation, so 10 feet could be added to the height of those structures there. That's the most extreme example, and I think it's only limited to those three lots that would be affected. And along the D River, there's similar kinds, I think we have 24-foot VE zone here, it's pretty much limited to basically Kylo's and the park, and we go to 31 feet, a difference of seven feet, but the top of the seawall here is about, is 30 feet, so we're talking two feet difference would be allowed there. Two feet here in the AO depth, on the east side of the highway, and then we'd go to the, I'll zoom in on this actually, on the, a little bit further east, in the Crystal Lagoon area. The depths there are complex, but you can see this 20-foot depth along here, the water depth is at about, or the surface of the water is roughly 14 feet, depending on tides and so on, but it's mapped as 14. So, the ground is at about 16, so you're looking at picking up two feet, maybe a little more, maybe a little bit less, depending on the exact contours. You can see there's, contours are very irregular through here, by all these dashed dots. Looking over towards Indian Shores, along the lagoon in Indian Shores, the AE zone, 17 feet in the pink area, the 20-foot line runs along here, so you're looking at 18, 16, so the ground level is probably 14 at the least to 18, so you're looking at maybe maximum of four-foot difference in elevation, that would be a difference in building height that would be allowed there. This is the most significant area in the Wacoma Beach area, you've got a VE zone of 32 feet. The top of the bluff is somewhere around 30 feet, except coming in here, the 30, it's shorter, this is 30-foot line here, so this is all less than 30 feet in here, so you would get probably at least three feet, maybe more. And then on this AO zone, one foot again, because it's a one-foot depth, you get two Rhodes End, I've included Rhodes End, just for, to show what the future might hold. The top of the, and this is the most extreme example from Rhodes End, and it is similar to the extreme, the other extreme example I showed you. The top of the seawall, the top of the bluff there is at about 32, 30, about 36 feet. So, you could get two feet or, or maybe a little bit more. Actually, it's not, it's not that extreme, but it just depends on the details of the property here, it might be more like, down here might be more like, I'm sorry, not 30, I'm sorry, it's 20, 20-something feet, so we're looking at maybe as much as 10-foot increase there. So, this is the 30-foot line, set back here a ways. Then again, a one-foot depth of the AO zones, that would give two feet of additional, additional height. So, the issues here are Nelscott, that's sort of separate from everything else, and that's important that we just correct that, again, that was an oversight, a mistake that we recently discovered. Concerns with the other thing on the floodplains, and I want to make it clear, this all came up as from some citizen concerns about, in particular, Nelscott, where we reduced the allowable height, getting compressed between that reduced height and then the floodplain elevation requirements, so to allow a little bit of additional height. It's, it's not something I'm in love with necessarily, you know, I guess staff isn't saying it's a good idea or a bad idea, we agreed to bring it forward and give it to you. There, this is one of those things where there may well be some unintended consequences that we're not realizing. One of the biggest concerns at the Planning Commission was the effects on neighbors, where you're expecting that the property across the street from you is going to be able to build to 35 feet, and all of a sudden, they're allowed to build to 40 feet or something like that. Also, one question, we have, we've said you get flood level plus a foot, which is where the ground floor is, where the lowest floor is supposed to be, do you want to include that extra foot for additional height? That's something to consider. Also, consider whether to put a cap on the extent of the additional height that's allowed. The Planning Commission, in their recommendation, suggested a four-foot cap, so that one foot plus as much to, as much as another three feet. So, it would be whatever you need to, but no more than four feet. You wouldn't automatically get four feet, you'd get, might get one or two or three or whatever. The Planning Commission recommended approval by a four-to-two vote, and again, recommended a two-foot maximum cap on the additional height. Their major concern was, it was about the effects on the adjacent properties, on the neighbors and blocking views, views being so important here.
You said two foot, but you mean four feet on the...
Four feet, four-foot cap, yeah, it was a four-to-two vote, I'm sorry, but a two-foot, a four-foot maximum on the additional height that would be allowed.
Okay.
And, yeah, that's all I have.
Let me, if I may, Mayor, very briefly on this, I'd like to just weigh in. I guess in a lot of cities, the height limits have various consequences for, in big cities, for winds and all kinds of views and whatever, but here, here it really has been a view issue, and it's been a pretty sensitive one. I think the question is, who bears the disadvantage of property that's in a flood zone? Is it the owner of that property, or is it the neighbors? And I think the recommendation here, which mitigates that problem of people having land in the flood zone, to some extent, and more often than not, I think completely, is reasonable, and I think the four-foot really makes some sense, because otherwise, we could really see some very tall buildings. And again, I think the person that buys or owns property in a flood zone bears some of that responsibility, so I recommend that we keep, if you pass this ordinance, that you keep the limits on it. We've seen over recent years, a great deal of sensitivity on height, and more often than not, it's been from neighborhoods saying, "We really need you to look at height and not to exceed," certainly not to go up, but to consider height limits that are lower, not higher. So, I just wanted to throw that in.
I should add one other thing, too. There is a provision in the charter that limits all buildings in the city to no more than 45 feet without a vote of the people, so no matter what this would allow, it wouldn't allow anybody to go over 45 feet.
Questions of council to staff? For clarity, any questions?
Mr. Townsend, with a four-foot maximum cap, somebody on the floodplain that would qualify to, for a 10-foot extension, would it be limited to four foot?
That's right.
Thank you.
If I can, you use, you know, pick up, add, you get, you know, in essence, as you were going through the map, depending on the elevation, be able to, I'm assuming, add to their, the height of their building with different terms. Am I envisioning stilts? Am I envisioning usable space?
In...
So, in essence, am I, am I adding, you know, in this proposal, four feet, but it's...
Well, it would, it could be, it could be added fill in a flood, in an AO zone. You can't fill in what's called a flood wave, but in a floodplain, you can fill, so it could be fill, it could be stilts, but just, it would, could be, to break away construction underneath, some non-habitable space, as long as it could break away, if the waves came in, for example, that's allowed as well. There wouldn't be an additional floor, you could, you know, a floor that you would get, that wouldn't count. You, because that, your lowest floor has to be elevated a certain amount, and so you start from where that elevation is.
And I guess the other thing, I'm wondering about, four feet probably isn't enough, but is it a subterranean parking, if the landscape...
People are always allowed to dig down.
Okay. Okay.
One more, Mr. Townsend, was this prompted by new FEMA regulations or maps?
Well, it was sort of a double whammy, it's the new FEMA maps, which actually, I think, created some uncertainty, because they changed the number of the flood elevation, it didn't change really what it was, in some cases it did, in some cases, it took some property out of the floodplain, the floods on in other places, it put it in. But, for something that was in the flood zone and still is, the base flood elevation number may have changed, but the actual, because the datum that was used changed, we went from one map that said, you know, zero is here, to another map that said zero is here, or vice versa, you know, where zero was changed. So, how high above zero you have to be changed, in some cases. That was one thing, so that created some confusion and uncertainty, and also on top of that was, we had, in particular, Nelscott, which is where this came up, was, the allowed height came down from 45 feet to 35 feet, so feeling of compression there.
But, would that not be in other areas? I'm thinking along the coastal area where you were showing, because other parts of the community, you're maxed at 45 by charter, so that's why. Okay, thank you.
In Taft, the height limit there is 38 feet, so even if you got seven, more than seven feet, which you wouldn't, but if you, under any circumstance, but if you did, you still couldn't go above 45. In someplace in the GC zone where the height limit is 45, you'd get nothing, because you can't go above 45 feet.
Okay. Mayor, please.
You mentioned that there are about eight lots that are yet undeveloped on the coast. Did I hear that right?
That was in the earlier hearing, yeah, there were eight, well, what I said was, there were eight lots of 10,000 square feet or more along the coast that are undeveloped.
Okay, so essentially, we're talking about new construction here with this ordinance, are we not?
Not necessarily.
Some house burned down or something?
Remodels, remodels, or demolition and reconstruction, or, you know, accidental destruction or whatever, so it would apply across the board.
I can understand that, but when you look at the number of lots available, and the reconstruction and the possibility of fire or whatever, we're still dealing with a very small percentage of the overall number of lots that we have on the coast, are we not?
Well, in one sense, we're dealing with all of them, and in another sense, yeah, you're dealing with a few, you know, barring a tsunami or another real estate boom or something, but...
So practically speaking, is what I'm getting, is that we're not, this isn't something that's going to apply to everybody tomorrow, in other words, it's a, it's a situation that only really helps a few people for a while.
I guess, yeah, I mean, building is slow right now, and so there probably wouldn't be that many in the short term that would be affected, you know, again, unless there was a fire or something and your building was burned, you'd want to be able to reconstruct at least what you have now, that what was permitted now, and that was the idea here, was to sort of preserve those future rights.
Where I'm going with this is that, I guess what I'm looking for is whether or not you were, you would be comfortable with a three-foot cap instead of a four-foot cap. I'm sensitive to the neighbors, and I think that that's something to consider strongly.
The number is, it's kind of random, you know, it's what you're comfortable with, I mean, it's sort of not what I'm comfortable with. I had thought that some numbers, certainly less than five, if there was going to be a cap, and I thought it should be capped personally, would be appropriate, and, you know, I don't know, two, three, four, they're all, they're all reasonable numbers for whatever reasons. No matter what number it is, it's better than what people have now. And then you have to decide sort of where to, where to draw the line on how it affects everybody else who may be expecting to be able to see, at least see a peak of the ocean, you know, over that, over that building, and then it goes up four feet, and they lose the peak of the ocean or whatever.
Counselor, what, why, I'm curious, difference between three and four, I understand is one foot, but why is, why are you questioned at a three foot? What would be the motivation to reduce this from four to three?
I'm just thinking about situations where I've seen people with a peek-a-boo view, and all of a sudden, they're going to, they have a chance to lose that, they bought that house because of that peek-a-boo view, and so I'm just trying to eliminate too much of an impact on those situations.
Yeah. Okay, so it could be two feet, and...
Sure.
I mean, there was no magic to the three?
No magic to the three, no.
That's what I was...
I'm just wanting to really, to keep the impact as low as we can on the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question.
Please.
How often does CIMA revise these numbers? Because we were saying something, I keep on listening, I, I'm listening, you know, they say it's going to be this floodplain this year, and maybe next year it'll go down? I don't, what I'm dealing with here is, you know, how often do these things change?
They've changed last year, I think, and then for, the last time before that was 98, 1998, so you're looking at 12 years.
They tell it.
But, we know they're working on a new map right now, and we expect a change within the next couple of years. Primarily because, if you look at these maps we have, you see how, how detailed, the contours are based on the LiDAR map, which is LiDAR mapping that we've done, which is extremely accurate. The FEMA zones don't follow those lines well at all, and I think the intent is that they do follow them, and they've got better information now, because LiDAR's been... because LiDAR's been done on the entire coast. So, they're, they're looking at remapping it, and so we can expect more detailed changes. And I'm hoping, you know, where they, the maps we have now, if you actually look at the map, the line between the zones is 30 feet thick, you know, so when you, when you put it on, on the ground, so, you know, is this lot in the zone or out of it? I would, I would hope it's much more defined than what they have now. But, your question is, is important in that, you know, they, they do remap it, and they may change it, and when that happens, we'll have to take another look. Assuming you adopt this kind of change, we'd have to take another look and just see whether, see what impact that would have.
You know, this begs the question again, is Counselor Spregge brought up few lots, and it, so it'd be either remodeling or fire, or something to replenish. I'm, I'm trying to think when the purpose would be. Is there not an opportunity for an exception? Is there not a variance opportunity rather than a, a change?
Variance is, the state mandates the standards for variances. Variances are hard to get. And the main, the main criterion is that there's something unique about your property that makes it, means you can't develop in a way that your other people in the neighborhood in the same zone can develop. Now, if someone can, can make an argument that, you know, I got compressed, and that then, if the planning commission says, "Well, yeah, that's, that's a pretty good reason," and assuming all the, the other criteria are met, then conceivably, they could. I, I don't know, I can't say whether, whether it would carry the day at the planning commission or not. I'm just trying to think how we would react to it, as, you know, making a staff recommendation. And, you know, I guess it depends on, it's going to depend on lot by lot, probably, what the, what the issues are.
Yes, a variance.
Exactly.
Other questions of staff?
I guess, if I can make a comment, my, my druthers would be that we leave things as they are right now and try to fix that, the compression thing you were talking about in that one area, but not necessarily apply this all up and down the city limits of, of our city.
Why don't we take some public hearing and, you know, hear the, some, some more testimony? Sound all right? Thank you. Mr. Taylor, this was the item you signed up for. Come on forward, if you would.
I'm Jim Taylor, and I live at 2582 Southwest Anchor Avenue. And although I'm not necessarily opposed to this, I, I do urge caution in considering whether or not to adopt this proposed zoning ordinance amendment regarding building height. And what I, I just wanted to clarify, I'm not talking about the Nelscott correction portion of this. As far as I'm concerned, that's fine. It's a no-brainer. Please, considering these four potential issues, actually, as it turned out, some, if not most of which, have already been covered by Mr. Townsend and your discussion afterward. Number one, FEMA can change the flood zone configurations and heights upon which your assumptions about this proposal are based. So, for example, a home or business that is now in the flood zone may not be in the flood zone in the future, or vice versa. Or the flood levels might be raised, or they might be lowered. Point number two, some roads-end properties are in low-lying areas, which would come into play if roads-end is annexed and this proposal is adopted. Number three, as a general precaution, please think about unintended consequences, including potential for gaming the system. I don't have any specific examples that come to mind, but that's just, you know, that's often a consideration, and this might be one case where that could come into play. And number four, the, the rights of nearby property owners to retain their ocean view should be given strong consideration. There is an alternative, which just came up a moment ago, namely, not adopting this proposal and continuing to use the existing variance process. That process can be difficult, and it is imperfect, but it does provide an opportunity to consider unique circumstances and for neighbors to give their input and their opinions, rather than a one-size-fits-all ordinance. And finally, if you do decide to adopt this amendment, please, please, keep the four-foot maximum that's in the draft ordinance. That would limit overall structure height to 39 feet for structures in a residential own, zone within 500 feet of any shoreline. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions of council? Thank you, very concise. Thanks very much. Other people that would wish to address the council? A familiar face?
Yes. Good evening, City Council. My name is Gary Ellingson, and my mailing address is 3417 Southwest Anchor. My home address is 3406 Southwest Beach. And I didn't really prepare remarks tonight, because essentially, when I did at the planning commission meeting, I used up my three minutes and didn't have a chance to say how I would interject a thought process relative to this minimum building height in a flood plain area. And when I mentioned earlier that I had talked to a council to make sure it would be okay to come and interject in this process, I was told that as long as it didn't affect me and only me, but other people as well, that, you know, I could throw my hat in the ring as far as our particular situation and what our circumstance dictated. One of the most interesting things I've done in city services, to serve on the planning commission, because whenever something like this would come up, I thought I would have a, a picture of, you know, a ready answer, and I often found that things were more complicated than what I had initially thought about. In our particular situation, when we bought our property, which at the time was a small three-story motel with a modestly pitched roof, I wanted to make sure that the height that the building was in conformed with the city guidelines. And at that time, for maybe over 20 years afterwards, it was 44 or 45 feet. A while ago, not too long ago, actually, relative to how long I've been there, we got put into a mixed use, or we had the opportunity to be put into a mixed-use area, which reduced the overall height to 35 feet. Well, realizing that I had a basic FEMA elevation requirement, I, I determined very quickly that we would be compressed and had some concerns about that. The, the simple fact of the matter is, well, for me, when they talk about these minimum heights that FEMA has, in actuality, if you take all of these figures, it's actually one foot over that, is what the real requirement is, because there, there's a base flood elevation, a BFE, plus one foot. And so, well, I tried to analyze what was going on in Taft. I basically ran into the same thing that Richard talked about. You know, it's difficult to determine exactly what the effect in certain areas are along 51st. When I went further into Taft, there are some base elevations required there that adding the foot would require the person to be five feet above the existing grade. And some of that properties for sale, and the allowance of five additional feet would be important to it, because certain buyers may want to maximize as much as they can out of the property. There's a little bit of an area down in Cutler City that's like, I call it a three-sided bathtub, where, you know, going into the heart of Cutler City would require four, four feet or more. But most of those places that I'm referring to in Cutler City are houses, and so, I don't know how important it would be. But I would really like for this to be taken a look at, and the new ordinance language for me, and I, I thought of several things that nobody has ever accused me of, and one of them is being the smartest person they have ever met.
Counselor, we're, we're going to have to wrap up with the, the time limit there. Could we do, any questions of council, and maybe pull out what Gary is trying to get? Please, Jester.
What is your opinion regarding the variance process, Mr. Ellingson?
Well, when I inquired by one of the esteemed staff in planning, if it was realistic to ask for a variance concerning things of this nature, I was told basically, no. I used an example, if, if you had a three-story building and all of a sudden, you could only have two stories, would that be considered a hardship? And I even went so far as to say if that had, you know, a negative impact relative to being able to even do the two stories financially, would it be a hardship? And I'm paraphrasing, the answer was softer than that, but it was basically, it's not a very realistic expectation to go through a, a variance, or to claim a hardship in this case.
Thank you. So, your, your property is one of those that talked about in the Nelscott area, that because of the limit brought down, started at 45 and brought down to 35, and then now, because of flood plain will be, well, in this case, what, four feet? You'd really get squeezed.
Yeah, I, I'm not used to these exact figures, because I kind of familiarized myself when the majoring point was at a different place. But in talking to Richard, I don't think the, the overall distance has changed, it's just a different mark that they go from. But the short answer to the question is yes. And, so...
Good. Other question? Counselor?
As I understood the, the ordinance, if it's a commercial situation, a commercial building, that it's not, not affected like it would be for residential at 35 feet? Am I wrong?
You know, that's what I had kind of thought. In fact, and I'm not arguing against this, but with the roof elevations being measured in the midpoint, and I, I have to take responsibility for basically part of this not having come up a long while ago. I just kind of didn't pay the attention I should have when certain of these discussions arose, but had been under the mistaken impression that there was some grandfathering or some, some opportunity for doing replacement. But basically, and Richard can correct me if I'm wrong, the particular zone of Nelscott that I'm in, I am regulated by the height that the whole of the, there are three different overlays of, of that overlay, and I'm in a mixed-use overlay, and the maximum building height is 35 feet.
Or an RC, RC zone commercially?
Yeah, and that's, that's why I'm saying this, why it's so awkward for me, is all the while, we had been RC, it had been higher. In fact, I wouldn't even be talking to you, to ask you about this, if I was still up at that height, because I, I never built to that height. And, and I have sensitivity to my neighbors, I, I hope that I do, because I realize how important it is to have good relations with our neighbors for our customers to want to come back. But we've had allowances on the side of the building, which are not the same as having a low building, but it, and, and, you know, there, there have been provisions in the past for, you know, some peaks of the ocean. But I know if you were to, well, I don't know anything. All I know is what I've, I've told you is...
Okay.
As accurate, as we're limited to 35 feet.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't have been more clear. Three minutes, just isn't a lot of time to try to discuss something as complicated as this is. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I wanted the public to know, in spite of, maybe in the way distant past, I've mentioned compression a couple of times around, I've never tried to lobby any of you by bringing you to the property or do anything that is, would bring any kind of disrespect to the council, because I, that's very important to me.
Good.
Never to do that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thanks very much. Is there anyone else that would like to take this opportunity to have testimony entered? What's there, that one, was that letter on this topic?
Yes, you have a letter in front of you from the Oregon Coast Community College.
Yes, that has been entered in, an actual letter for this topic, and will be entered to the record. And you all got copies, okay? Would that be the appropriate way to handle that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. At this point, do you, is there council, have more questions of staff? Anything raised?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Townsend, could you come back?
Are we done with the public testimony portion?
Not yet.
Okay.
We may just...
I'm just wondering if there was comment from public, any other public agencies or any other public comment?
It's on the script, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Is anybody else who wants to speak?
Uh-huh. Go ahead with your question.
Mr. Townsend, is it necessary to have both of these amendments in the same proposal? I mean, I don't have any trouble with the Nelscott issue, but I do have trouble with the building height issue.
No, we can, we can break it into two. We just did it for convenience, but we can easily break it into two different ordinance, or just one, if, if you only want to proceed with one.
That would be my preference. I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
The other question raised, just on the last testimony, too, regarding understanding on commercial heights, was that the right answer, that this had changed?
Yeah, in, in Nelscott, it changed. Nelscott used to be RC, and it's not anymore. It's Nelscott beachside mixed use along, along the coast there, and it changed from a 45-foot height limit to 35-foot height limit. That was during, within the urban renewal planning process for Nelscott.
Yeah, it's probably three or four years ago.
I didn't know that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Another question. You mentioned that variances are very hard to get. How much control do we have over the variance process? In other words, can we modify it so that in cases such as this, we can open up the door a little bit to allow those kinds of changes, to accommodate those hardships?
In general, the, the four criteria that exist for variances are, are set by state law, but I think, like, we allow, in the, in our overlays, well, we still have to go through those four. We do have some different variance criteria there. Just trying to think if there can be a, I'm, I'm looking at council here, but...
I'm, I'm not quite sure what the question is. I'm poised.
So, can we have relaxed variance standards, I guess, or different variance standards, I should say, for different kinds of variances?
In certain situations, if we identify those situations.
I think you could add criteria to the variance process. I'm not sure you could adopt variance criteria that would only apply to a certain type of permit.
I was thinking of compression situations in particular. If there would be a way in which we could adopt a policy or something which would allow us to consider changes in that situation, in the right zones.
You know, I could look into it. I'm, I'm a little, I'm hesitating, because... I'm a little, I'm hesitating because the purpose of the variance criteria as much as possible is to have clear standards that can accommodate different facts. So in other words, you have somebody apply for a variance to whatever the code says isn't allowed to vary. For instance, I don't know if lot width is something that can be varied if there's a minimum. I know that at certain times a setback can be part of a variance application. Am I correct in that, Richard? I'm just trying to think off the top of my head. So if certain setbacks can be an approved variance, then there are four variance criteria, and those are standards. So the burden of proof is on the applicant to come in and show how the situation with regard to the property, which is not something the applicant caused, is somehow so unique that, you know, a reasonable person would say, well, that we should defer or change that application of that criteria because it has an unintended negative consequence that other property owners don't have to deal with. The problem in this situation is that everybody would have to potentially deal with it. So I guess when I was first considering it, I thought, I don't know how you could meet the most basic variance standard, which is that somehow your property is unique. Your property is not going to be unique if it's in the flood zone. You know, you share the same, I wanted to say the same status as all the other properties that are also mapped similarly. I guess what could be different is that somehow the topography of your property or where it's placed makes it such that the limitation in the ordinance has some unintended consequence that.
Isn't that what we were dealing with though, in that compression example that you used?
I think it's conceivable that that could meet that criteria, and again, you know, it's a matter of convincing the planning commission that that's what it is.
I guess, let me, there's a second part to this. I think the bigger issue is that height has, the changes in height have unintended or unknown changes in allowed height have the potential to affect other properties. And the one thing that you will always hear from a potential purchaser or a potential developer is they want to know what the standards are. So if you purchased a property with the understanding that there could be a three-story hotel in front of you or a five-story building, then you're purchasing with full knowledge that your present view could be impeded. However, if there's a possibility that you think it's going to be a height from that lower place below you that somehow will still not impede your view, but a variance could be approved 10 years later that does block your view, that's a difficult potential to take into place, because you don't know what the amount of that variance might be. If it's three feet or five feet or eight feet, you know it can't go over 45 feet, but you're not expecting to see something that high. So I guess that's the balancing act that you would be trying to grapple with if you wanted to look into a variance procedure, is how do you balance the bright line and giving people the understanding of what would their rational expectations be when they purchase property?
Mayor, a quick question of Richard. You mentioned Nell Scott is having this height limitation. I thought there were other areas that have height limitations, Ocean Lake, didn't we establish a different height in Ocean Lake, for example?
In part of it, you know.
Ocean Lake, all the way across, just 35.
Yeah, okay.
So I guess, I mean, we're talking about just Nell Scott, and I'm not sure that's accurate.
Yeah, well, also, let me clarify, and primarily I want to say in my own mind, there's two sort of Nell Scott issues we're facing tonight. One is the halfway up the roof thing, that's one issue, but that's nothing. The other Nell Scott issue is broader, and that applies elsewhere, including, as Mr. Hawker just pointed out, Ocean Lake.
Right. Any other questions of Townsend? Okay, let me, if I can, check to see if there's any other citizens that would like to testify that didn't sign up. Any comment from representatives of public agencies? Oh, not a public agency, though. Come forward, please.
Williams, and I live at 2625 Southwest Dune Avenue in Lincoln City. I guess I don't understand why this would not fit the criteria for a variance, and I'm speaking specifically of the hotel that Gary owns. Because of, if you can't refinance and you can't sell a piece of property because no one will finance it because it is being squished by the new requirements and the change in the zoning and the change in the height over the years, what will happen to that property? How could it not be granted a variance? So it just could fall into disrepair and nobody could, I mean, you have to tear it down and start over, and just tough luck.
I think there's where you raise the issues, and why we're raising the issue of a variance. So we hear the question, that's the same one we were asking as well, and looking for answers.
Well, I understand, but the attached housing ordinance or the attached residential property that we were just looking at affects eight lots, not that many. I guess I don't understand why, as a council, you're looking, that is a positive thing, and we want to go ahead and do that, and we don't want to take care of this issue. I know I shouldn't be asking questions.
Well, we don't normally have a discussion, but it's fine to pose the question, and then if the council wants to take it up, they will.
I understand. I live in Nell Scott. I really don't want a monument in Nell Scott, which I find the sandcastle is, it has been well-maintained, to fall into disrepair because can't afford to take care of it. I mean, I think it would be a travesty, honestly, so we'll have to see.
Thank you.
Mayor and Counsel, just a clarification, the prior ordinance you were discussing, I believe what Richard Townsend said is that that ordinance applied to potentially 249 properties, 241 of which were developed, still applies to the properties, they can still be redeveloped.
Okay, any other testimony? Hearing none? Then at this point, I think Councilman Norikis, you raised the question of separating these two issues so that we could maybe push one on, and that'd be the measuring piece, not the flood height issue, and maybe deal with two separate components, is that kind of the flavor? So the appropriate thing, I'm looking to counsel, could we separate, and I don't know how you handle public hearings, I don't think we're ready to move on the flood height.
I would just recommend continuing the public hearing. You're making a recommendation to separate out the Nell Scott height into one amendment, into one ordinance, and the, if I heard you correctly, to dealt with that separately?
Separately, yeah, deal with it separately, same ordinance, it's buried in the same ordinance, right?
Right, we're taking this material that's been presented to you, and we'll separate it into two separate ordinances, return to you with the Nell Scott ordinance if there's no further, there may be discussion about it, but we'll return that as a ordinance, and then continue, I guess, the discussion on the.
On the flood height.
On the flood height amendment or change. So as far as I'm concerned, if you pick a date certain, we'll continue the public hearing, and staff would return if that's workable for staff. Otherwise, we would have to do another notice, which we can do and come back at a later time, but staff would still need to know your direction.
Let's try to avoid another notice. This is a citywide notice, they're pretty.
Yeah, I prefer keeping the public hearing open and continuing, we just need to know a date certain.
We could, I guess, maybe continue it out for another month or something. My question is, do you want additional information from staff, and if so, what is it?
I think you want some information on variances, at least that's what I've heard you asking, and maybe we can.
Yeah, somehow to either rule out that variances just aren't an option here.
Well, I guess to do a full analysis, you have to figure out are you going to get an application for a variance for every property in the flood zone? So that comes into develop. Then that might be, you know, something to consider in terms of your resources. We don't get that many applications for variances, from what I can tell, maybe a couple a year. That's just my sense.
You know, it varies.
It varies.
You know, there were, I remember looking a while ago, there was one year where we got like 20 of them, and then, but normally we might get five or six at the most in a year.
Right.
So we can take a hard look at the variance idea of both, you know, is it reasonable to think a person could get a variance for the kinds of things we're talking about? And the other, is it possible to change criteria or have, you know, a different set of criteria or something like that for this particular issue? We can check into that, too.
If I understand, I'm going to try to help through what's going to happen next, because I think that's what the public and the council want to know. So we need a date for coming back to council with an ordinance to deal with a Nell Scott issue, and then a separate date to continue the public hearing on the height relief.
We can bring the Nell Scott issue to the next meeting.
That'd be fine. I think that one, we're ready to go.
So we're presenting ordinance with basically the same language as it appears now pertaining to Nell Scott in a separate ordinance. And I'm going to recommend continue the public hearing to the first meeting in October. I just, I think there would be a challenge to bring back that information in 30 days, if that's okay with you.
That on the flood height?
Yes, it'd be Monday, October 10th.
And we don't have a problem with a public hearing still being open and voting on a separate ordinance that we spun off?
No.
Okay, that's.
It's legislative, so you can craft of it what you will. The substance of the material that's contained in the one ordinance that presented to you is still going to be the majority, that substance is still going to be continued. You're just electing to resolve part of it in a separate ordinance.
That helps.
So will it be, I need to get this straight.
We're bringing back and.
Will it be a public hearing at the next meeting?
No.
Okay.
No.
We'll continue the public hearing to our first meeting in October, which is October 10th, this time and place.
Related to height in flood zones?
Okay.
Yes.
Sounds good. And next council meeting, we'll see an ordinance to take action on regarding the.
I'll decide on the Nell Scott.
Right. Sound all right?
You need a motion.
You need a motion.
Oh, need a motion. Can I have a motion for all that?
Yes, I move.
I think your motion is to continue the public hearing to October 10th, 2011.
6:00 P.M.
At 6:00 P.M.
Isn't that what I said?
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
No, opposed, say nay. Hearing none? All right. Now, we then have a, to receive written and oral testimony concerning the proposed zoning ordinance amendment Z O A 2011-06, clear vision standards. We've asked this one to be re-noticed for a future date, so item number 13 will be removed, and we'll move to receive written and/or oral testimony concerning the proposed zoning ordinance amendment Z O A 2011-07, commercial design standards.
The public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering amendments to the zoning ordinance. The proposal is identified as zoning ordinance amendment 2011-07, and the City of Lincoln City is initiating the proposed amendments. The proposed ordinance would make minor revisions to Chapter 17.74, which governs commercial design in the general commercial and recreation commercial zones. Amendments will improve organization and clarity and will not add new regulations to those adopted in 2007. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on August 16th, 2011, and forwarded a recommendation for approval. The city council's role in this legislative process is to consider any written or oral testimony, as well as information from staff, and make a final decision as to ordinance amendments or new ordinances. Are there any objections to the council's jurisdiction? Are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest? The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the unamended portions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents its report, I'll summarize the public hearing procedures which the city council has adopted. A brochure outlining the procedures is at the entrance to the council chambers. Staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the council has questions, your time responding to their questions will not be included in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and mailing address. If you also have written testimonies to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff present its report?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, most of what we're talking about this evening is editorial in nature rather than substantive, and this is for the commercial design standards, as was mentioned. These were adopted several years ago, and now that we've had some experience with them, we see that there are things that could be worded more clearly for the public as well as for the staff. And I will just kind of walk you through the ordinance in the draft that you received, the changes are highlighted. First of all, we have added definitions of pearl and string in the definitions sections, and I don't think that's a controversial thing, but we hadn't had those in there before in the definitions, so that will be helpful to us. The second change is in the applicability section, which is 1774-20. And in this section, the one thing that bothered me when I was using the ordinance is in A1, it refers to Article II of this chapter as being about curls, and Article III about being about strings. And in fact, Article II is about guidelines, and Article III is about standards. So that was just a needed change. In 1774-30, this is just rewording for clarity. And as we go down to D2, again, we just have clarification. Same with 1774-40, that's a small change. 1774-50, guidelines we are talking about within the commercial areas of the community, uniform application of design standards. Again, this is just an improved wording, aye. Clear for everyone? The same is true of 1774-60, which is site, design standards, and guidelines. A lot of red in the section of 1774-60B1, where it's talking about building setback orientation and building bestry and circulation. The big change here is that, under a different heading, and that had to do with the building, and it's about the setback and the placement on the lot, moving that up here. Moving that up here. The, there was just some redundancy in the lettering and listing of the following sections, which are removed. Then, as we go over to, there are some words just here about the setback and the minimum height buffer. I just thought it wasn't clear again, and I talked with staff and we have changed it so that it... Moving on to, we have one section here that I want to draw your attention to, and it is a substantive. Over on 1774-80, that would be on page 20. It is B standards. It's talking about the minimum height. In these standards, we have a minimum height of eight feet. We want to have a large presence on the highway in our commercial areas. So, if a building is really going to be one story, it can have a parapet or something. It gives a larger impression from the street. We did have in here, an exception, buildings that had been, that replace auto-oriented uses. And I did not understand why we would give that exception. Before we, nobody really had reason for that. It's not that I would encourage reuse of an auto instance because it's actually talking about structure. So, suggest we take that out. There are then a few more wording changes. On page 22, you'll see that crossed out section, which is where I took the wording that asserted previously. Pretty much are the changes in the proposed. The planning commission considered this at their meeting last Tuesday and unanimously recommended these changes.
Great. Thank you. Questions from council of staff?
I have a question. Your honor.
Go ahead.
I can't find it on my laptop here. But in the, I think it was on the, maybe it was a memo or the introduction, you referred to the armature of a block. Let me see if I can find it.
Yes, I know we have that in there somewhere too. And I imagine that that has to do with the height of the building. Yes, it is on page 22, number 7.
And the word armature, what does that refer to?
It's the sense of bulk, I guess. Or the, and let me see here. See if we've defined it. But that's my, yeah, that's sort of my interpretation, is that it's sort of the bulk of the, the mass of the buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
No, we don't define it. Sorry.
Other questions, counselor?
I just had one question about the definition of pearl. It doesn't mention that that's part of an overlay zone. I just wondered if overlay zone maybe should be added in there just to clarify the fact that the pearl really is part of an overlay zone, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, the pearls, the general commercial design standards, well, the commercial design standards, I should say, do not apply to Nell Scott or Ocean Lake or Taft, where we have other design standards specific for those areas. So, the, in the other areas, Huacoma and De Lake, Color City, they do apply to commercial uses. The pearls are those nodes and the strings are everything else, essentially. And so, you would like us to work in, do you have, do you have a suggestion? What did you say?
Well, it's not, nothing very technical, I don't think, but it says pearl means an area in the zoning map designated to support and so on and so forth. But I guess many of us realize that that's really an overlay zone, is it not? I just thought maybe it should be called that.
Okay. Well, the Nell, I would consider, huh, that's an interesting thing. If it was an overlay zone, we would have an underlying zone.
Right.
In this case, our zone, it applies to the general commercial and the recreational commercial. Nell Scott is a distinct different zone. Taft is a distinct different zone. I will take a look at that before I bring it back to you to see if that makes sense in the context that we use it.
The only question I had.
Okay.
Would you mind, that section that you alluded to on the 18 feet, single family facing, a single story facing 101?
Yes, okay.
In a pearl, so what we're asking for is a minimum height of 18 feet?
We do now ask for a minimum height of 18 feet.
So, the only change in there is really taking out the car?
The exception for auto, for replacing auto-oriented uses.
We haven't changed the height. There ain't messed with anything. It's really just cleaning up.
Right.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you. Any other questions or clarifications, staff? All right. Hearing none? Any, this will be a time for testimony from citizens. No one signed up, but certainly anybody remaining in the audience, this will be the opportunity to speak. Seeing none? Is there any comments from representatives of public agencies? Again, seeing none? Thoughts from council? Kind of left open the question to come back for your question, counselor, on the pearls. So, is this something you want to keep open for a public hearing or close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Question before you a second and we act on that. So, at some point, we'll come back with an ordinance or clarification on this pearl overlay question, which may be some modification to the existing ordinance. Is that going to create a problem?
I don't know if it's going to create a problem to make the modifications, but if you can't anticipate the scope of the modifications are going to be anything more than just minor, then you can leave the public hearing open until it's brought back.
I can't imagine it having, it is really a significant clarification point rather than any impact.
Definition clarification.
So, you gave direction to staff, or if you're going to give direction to staff after you close the hearing, I think that's sufficient. So, you can make your motion, have a second, have a discussion on the motion on exactly that issue as to what your recommendation is.
The only question I would have then is if there is going to be a change in the definition. Do we want to close the public hearing now or should we continue it so that that can be included?
Well, that's where I was going with leaving it open, just in case somebody wanted to comment and said that that change affects them.
Yeah.
You have a, it's really no problem to continue the public hearing. You could still have the ordinance be read on the same night.
Okay, but if we close the public hearing, can we then modify the ordinance at the next meeting, say?
You can, and we've done that. But then, if somebody wants the opportunity to comment on that change, that's been foreclosed.
So, why don't we just go ahead and, if you don't mind, with the motion, withdrawing the motion and keep it extended to next meeting? Because this one, I don't think there's, will be an issue if we can, staff is able to come back to us by that time. Maybe we could ask staff?
I'll go ahead and withdraw the motion.
So, the question is, does next meeting allow enough time for staff to get clarification on the pearl issue brought up so that we could maybe?
That would be Monday, September 12.
It would be sufficient time. And I just wanted to point out that in the pearl definition on the fourth line, it does say the pearl overlay is an interim designation. So, the word overlay actually already is in there.
And what page is that on?
That's on page 2.
Oh, right up under the pearl definition. Okay.
And also, I noticed as I was reading that I used as examples Huacoma, Ocean Lake, De Lake, and Color City, and we should take the Ocean Lake out. So, I think if we make those, that change will hopefully be satisfactory.
I'll also tell you that I've reviewed the, what I can hear online from planning and zoning sources for definition of the word armature. And it's not clear to me how that term is used. I think it's meant to be the hidden support structure. But I'm just hazarding a guess.
In this, in our case, the, it's talking about building to the side lot lines. And that would have to do with the bulk and the mass of the buildings as you're going down the block. So, that's why I hazard that definition.
In the world of sculpture, I think your definition applies, Madam Counselor.
Good to know.
Mayor?
Yes.
Actually, I guess, when I looked at that and it said pearl overlay, I just thought it maybe should say zone, but then the pearl overlay, I think may be sufficient.
You're comfortable that would be okay?
Yes, I wouldn't have worded it that way, but that's okay.
Well, it's all right. Staff prerogative. So, we're all right with that then? So, there's nothing, would be no assignment? The council would be able to take a look at this next meeting?
I think we could go ahead and close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing and, is that, so you're back on, counselor? Would you like to make your motion?
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed with a nay? None? All right. Public hearing closed. And then we direct staff to bring back an ordinance of which we could vote on next meeting.
So moved.
All right. Sound okay?
Yes.
All right. We have another public hearing to provide an opportunity for public testimony on proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan map and zoning map, CPA and ZC 2011-02, initial by the, initiated by the city of Lincoln City primarily for park and open space lands at various locations citywide.
This proposed ordinance would rezone 31 parcels of publicly owned land to either park or open space. One additional parcel, which is residential and privately owned, is proposed to be rezoned single-family residential. The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter on August 16th, 2011, and forwarded a recommendation for approval. The city council's role in this process is to consider any written or oral testimony as well as information from staff and make a final decision as to ordinance amendments or new ordinances. Are there any objections to the council's jurisdiction? Are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest? The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the unamended portions of the city's zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria you believe apply to the subject of the hearing. Before the staff presents its report, I'll summarize the public hearing procedures which the city council has adopted. There is a brochure at the entrance to the council chambers outlining the procedures. Staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the council has questions, your time responding to their questions will not be included in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and mailing address. If you have written testimony to submit, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report for this public hearing?
Thank you. This is a rezoning of several properties, all but one of which are publicly owned. The, I'll just run through them briefly. At the extreme north end of town, there's a little over 85 acres that the city owns at the north of the villages of Cascade Head property. We've owned that since, I think, 1996. It's zoned single-family residential. It was a part of the villages of Cascade Head property to be held as open space, so recommending that be rezoned accordingly. There's several other sites. Parking lot at Holmes Road is zoned, Holmes Road Park is zoned single-family residential. Want to zone that park. The Dorchester Park, which is primarily tennis courts, is zoned, I think, general commercial. Want to zone that park. There's a donation of property off of West Devil's Lake Road, four acres. It's zoned professional campus right now. That would be zoned open space. North of Curtis Park, there's a 1.8 acres that's zoned multifamily residential. That would be zoned park. And the Gate Park, near, adjacent to Curtis Park, is zoned single-family residential. That would be zoned park. This is just, I'll give you some pictures of some of them. This is Holmes Road Park parking lot. Dorchester Park showing the tennis courts with the Dorchester house itself behind it there. Skateboard Park, including the cradle. Then, again, moving further south, we have Devil's Lake State Park is zoned R110. It's one of the very few areas of the city that is zoned single-family residential, 10,000 square feet, minimum lot size. It's proposed is to zone that park. There is a tiny part of the park down here that's already zoned park. The idea is to zone the rest of it park. And adjacent to that is part of the, what was the Hedrick property? The, and the park we were talking about earlier actually is zoned RC right now, I believe, and that would, this would be to zone it park. Or actually, zoned it open space. That would become zoned open space. And this is actually, this is view of one of the new restrooms in Devil's Lake State Park that was approved and rebuilt this past year. Just showing the D River Open Space, the Hot Stettler Park area. Then, in the Agnes Creek Open Space area, there is, I'll zoom in on that a little bit. There's some changes there. Also, a piece of property that is off of Bard Road that's, we kept zoned RM, multifamily residential, would be zoned park, actually zoned open space. There is, we did a property swap with the property owner here. We owned this piece, this sort of bluish area here. They owned this sort of tan area here. We switched. The idea is to zone the property that we gave to the private property owners, zone that single-family residential. And the piece that we got, which is now zoned single-family residential, to zone that open space. Then, we have, Taft High School is here. We own almost 73 acres up on the ridge behind it. That was acquired with open space funds. That would be zoned open space. There's property adjacent to the college, the new college building, a little over seven acres, would also be zoned open space. Continuing on south, this property on the south side of Schooner Creek is owned by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, almost 37 acres. That's part of the Slets Bay National Wildlife Refuge. It's zoned R1. We would zone it open space. And there's some space down in, off Color City, you know, the big white barn down there adjacent to the wetlands. There's a large area of land there, 24 acres, that's owned by the county, but we're proposing to zone it... to zone it, I think it's open space. And we actually have an easement on that for open space purposes. And then there's the small area, the kids and senior park, the two lots in Cutler City, they would be, they're zoned R15, single-family residential, so they would be zoned park. The, the public owners other than us, other than the city over these properties, the state parks department is, supports the change, and the county and the federal government have said they do not oppose it. They have no opposition to it. And of course, Mr. Gardner wants his property zoned. That's more pictures of the property. The approval was recommended by the Planning Commission unanimously in their meeting on the 16th and by the Parks Board on their meeting on the 17th. Also unanimous recommendation of approval.
Great. Pretty cut and dry. Questions of staff?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Please, no, go ahead, Greg. All your.
Mr. Townsend, could you go back to the Cutler City slide, two or three back there? Where is the white barn in relation to the?
Actually, the white barn is in the county. It's out here, I think it might be right around here.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, probably more, a little bit further, but it's in the county, it's not in the city.
Councillor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Townsend, would there be any possible downside to changing the zone of the Rhodes End property relative to the discussion we're having about annexing Rhodes End? I know the technical annexation would not.
Talking about the, that 80 acres or 60, the 60 acres up here?
Right. I mean, I know we're not trying to.
It's already in the city.
Right. But if it's zoned, the open space, I mean, I'm just asking the question if there's a downside, if there's any downside to that relative to something that might come up in the future for a piece of that land or part of it or anything that?
I don't think so. One of the, I think the condition of the land being transferred to us, that it be used for park or open space purposes, it couldn't be used for something else. So legally, I think it has to be used that way. I don't think it would affect either positively or negatively, anything having to do with the annexation of Rhodes End. I'm not sure if that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, I was wondering if eventually, you know, I don't know, you know, I don't know what the future holds in store, but you know, some kind of islanding or, you know, some, some possible annexation camps.
As I say, it's already in the city. It's already in the city, it's already part of the city, so the zone won't affect the fact that it's in the city at all.
Okay.
And open space, changing the zoning still is, the owner is the city, so correct. I mean, the city remains the owner of the properties by the zoning, so I think we. Other questions? Mr. Sprague?
With regards to the campus, it was that campus thing, I think it's on West Devils Lake Road there down around 22nd?
Oh, the professional campus property?
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, I was on the council when we zoned that campus, and the rationale for doing that was that we didn't have that much professional campus property available. And that was one of the reasons that we actually zoned that.
Yeah, that particular, we zoned that entire parcel. That particular piece of it is almost completely wetland.
Okay. I didn't know how far that, excuse me, I'm just losing my voice. I didn't know how far that extended, but that area, the rest of it then is still professional campus.
Yes, yeah, it's just the northernmost part. This piece right along the road here, that's where the ambulance nameless facility is. And there's three other lots there, but then, like I said, this is almost all wetland.
Okay.
Other questions, staff? And this, I think you prefaced it at the start, Mr. Townsend, this kind of housekeeping, that we let it build for a while and then do as we make changes and?
Yes, and really, one of the big purposes, if you look at our zoning map and you think, you know, there's all this residential property that's really not residential, or, and just to, is to make our inventory reflect reality.
Great. All right, with that, any other questions of staff? Let me call for, if there any person in the audience who did not sign up and wishes to speak, please come forward. Is there any comment from representatives of public agencies? Seeing none. Act of council. Be a time we could either, you know, close the public hearing and?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? None? All right. Direction then would be to bring back the ordinance ready for, because it's not on the, next meeting for vote? Sound all right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, that wasn't so bad. Public hearings. Let's move to ordinance, if we could.
You have ordinance number 2011-09, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City adopting provisions relating to attached single-family dwellings, amending ordinance number 84-02 as amended, and amending Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17.
This is the, we had, excuse me, had last meeting and then had a public hearing earlier and entertain a motion?
Question before we do.
Okay.
Do we have to have two readings for motion, for ordinances anymore? How do we do that?
Not if it's unanimous. If it's unanimous on the first reading, if it's not unanimous.
I'm talking about two readings, not, not two different votes. I'm talking about two, two readings.
You do have two readings, except that if you, if it's a unanimous vote, then it's one reading. If it's not unanimous, you bring it back for a second reading. That's the way your charter and code reads.
Yeah, I guess that's different than we used to do it, isn't it? We used to have to read the ordinance twice and then you.
That's not changed. I mean, if there's a no vote and that's, of course.
Then it would.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Well, it would come back and you'd read it by title again.
I can find the provision for you.
That was the, that was.
That's okay, that's okay. I'm just a little confused on that.
That was in the original charter.
Okay.
So entertain a motion for this ordinance?
I move that we adopt provisions relating to attached single-family dwellings, amending ordinance number 84-02 as amended, and amending Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance number 2011-09, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City adopting provisions relating to attached single-family dwellings, amending ordinance number 84-02 as amended, and amending Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17.
Just a clarification before your roll call. This is with the two specific changes to the minimum required with changing that from 25 to 35 feet.
Thank you.
Places where marked.
Thank you very much, yes. Roll call, vote?
Norakis?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Ellingson?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Next ordinance. Ordinance number 2011-10, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending Chapter 17.76, administrative provisions, allow for changes in property ownership for purposes of public notices, expanding the notification area for the public notices, amending ordinances number 84-02 as amended, and amending Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17.
There's actually the word "to" after the first comma. It's just a typo in the.
Oh.
To allow for.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2011-10.
Is there a second?
Okay.
So motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2010-2011-10, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City amending Chapter 17.76, administrative provisions, allow for changes in property ownership for purposes of public notices, expanding notification area for public notices, amending ordinance number 84-02 as amended, and amending Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17. Roll call, vote?
Sprague?
Pardon me?
Sprague?
Yes, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Quant?
Yes.
Ellingson?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Mayor Anderson and council, I'm reading from the city charter. This is Chapter 4, Section 9.2. Just to clarify, an ordinance may be enacted at a single meeting of the council by unanimous vote of all council members voting when a quorum is present upon being read by title only. If a request is made by any council member for the ordinance to be read in full, the ordinance shall be read fully and distinctly prior to vote on the ordinance unless, at least three days before the reading, a copy was provided for each council member, et cetera. Section 2, if after first reading of the ordinance in full or by title, the council does not unanimously approve adoption of the ordinance, the ordinance shall come back to the council for a second reading at the city council on a different day. The second reading shall be by title only unless someone requests it be read in full, et cetera. So there you have it.
All right, this will be a time for any comments from the public. Last call. Jeez. Oh, you know, we do have, before we do that, if you're so interested, Mr. Rocker, number eight?
Up to you.
How does the council feel? That would be the survey on, from the annexation, Rhodes End annexation?
It would be 10 minutes, I think.
Why don't we do that next time?
That's, it's fine, your pleasure, next time?
Again, there's no hurry on this.
Okay, I didn't want to leave you out.
Okay, and, and it's, we can make it available to the public at any time, the survey summary document, anybody needs to see a copy that hasn't seen it can email me or call me.
And actually, it was in a couple of council packets ago, two, I think, two meetings ago.
Two packets, and it may have been in the last one, too. And by the way, I have gotten a number of survey responses since then, and I will update the memo and put it in the next packet.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hearing no comments from the public then, how about from councillors? Councillor Sprague, nothing, huh? Councillor Quant?
Clear the registration cards, check them, we got a vote here on the 20th of September.
September 20th. When's the last registration to vote?
I was looking for it, but couldn't find it.
Okay. We have, that's right, we have a seat to fill, one of these seats. Ward one.
There is a, there is, Mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt, but there is a, an online registration in Oregon now, voter registration, and I don't know the details of that.
You can go, the county site's got a link to it.
Okay.
Yeah, and then there's, the county site's got a link to it. You go to voter registration in the county.
Great. Carrie, any comments for tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. Norakis?
Nothing, thanks.
I have just a couple of opportunities for folks. Leadership Lincoln is a leadership class sponsored by the Newport Chamber. I actually attended that a couple of years ago and found it very interesting. You meet once a month at different businesses and get educated about things around the county. So once a month from September to June, if you're so interested, contacting the Newport Chamber would be a way to go. Another item, we've all been invited to the Devils Lake Revival, Saturday, August 27th, at Regatta Park, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Live music, food, education, free boat rides, win a kayak. So it sounds like for all us locals, here's an opportunity to revisit and get familiar with the lake at Regatta Park, so on the 27th. And another item, I had the privilege of actually of attending this weekend, of all things, a mush ball tournament here in Lincoln City. 17 teams participated, 16 of them from out of town. So I was quickly doing the math, counting how many players, each team fields 10, but there's a good 10 to 15 on a team, trying to do the math of 2.5 or 3.4 per player. And they were in town for three days, and I enjoyed the game. It's very similar to softball, bigger ball, softer ball, but it's been going on for some 20 years in Lincoln City, and all the folks looked like they were good consumers, so appreciated having them in town. With that, call this evening's meeting adjourned. Thank you.